Free.
Please, sir.
What do you think, sir?
They just have to drink hot water. Is that thing, is that?
I think so, yeah.
Can I just drink some hot water? I apologize, guys.
I can assume we have a big gap, but I don't like to say that.
We all have some tomorrow. Guaranteed. Jonathan's gonna break it.
He's gonna be in the truck when he gets to work.
Hey, I'll have him sitting in his driver's seat.
Denial there, though.
Turn over that cord, and it's probably gonna be me.
I said, I got you out of the first one.
Four cats?
Four dogs.
Four dogs. Oh, we've always had dogs, but getting rid of the dog in the options. I just have to, but we don't have dogs. Not really. Commerce games, dogging Saturday. Yeah, because we do also. It's not a wood, isn't it?
Might take two hours.
Pretty much, except for the Marion Ridge Park. I appreciate that.
I'll stay awake.
All right, we'll call the special town council meeting budget workshop to work.
It's capital T.
First item is adoption of the agenda, pretty straightforward agenda. There are no changes or amendments. I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
A motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Councilman Edwards, with the motions, I say.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye. Most, all right, agenda is adopted. And so the next item of business is the fiscal year 23, 24 budget discussion. Looking to provide feedback and input on this draft budget. That will be presented in May. In the hope of getting it done by June 6th, but we'll see how that goes. Swan, though, is there anything to add?
No, that's, that would be our goal was to make adjustments later this week, present it back to you all next week. Start the 30 days that it has to be available for public inspection with the June 6th, I think it is, that Tuesday, adoption. Can still make changes up to that June date, but again, if we need to have another meeting, we can certainly do that. I know in the past, we've scheduled a meeting at the end of June and then canceled the July meeting to do that. So have to get it done early, but as long as we get it done before the end of June, we're good.
So if council members have had an opportunity to review the summary, we can...
And I'm happy to go through those quickly, or we can go through the budget, start with questions, however. Council would like to proceed.
Can you go through that quickly?
Yeah, I can go through the overview real quick. So starting out in the, in the general fund, we've increased the tax rate from 37 to 38. So that's given us some, some different movement within the revenue there to squeeze in some more things into the projects and different expenses, which will be mentioned later on. No changes recommended in recycling fees, recycling from Republic, those recycling charges from Republic are increasing by 4.9%. But staff is confident that we've got enough of a buffer between the expenses with the Republic contract and the fees that are charged currently to basically just eat that, that overage. So we'd say no increase in recycling. And just to take that a little bit further, you know, we don't really have many costs associated with that because we contracted out. So if we have that little bit of a buffer going from an $8,000 buffer to $5,000 or so is still enough to cover that. So no change there. We are recommending an increase in solid waste fees, flat 50 cents per month, per level of garbage collection fees. So costs for repairs, parts, tires, et cetera, have all increased, which have impacted the sanitation budget. So we wanted to put that small increase in there to try and cover some of those costs. And most of these, most of these items are highlighted in yellow on the spreadsheet. So if you're following along there, you'll see those, and if not, we can discuss them later. Just easier for you to reference.
Was there a 3% tipping fees for the solid waste?
Yes, there was a 3% tipping fee increase. Yes, sir, so that, that goes up as well. We've got some ARPA funds budgeted for continued streetscape project work. I do have a line item in there for some money from the state. It's blank right now, but we're keeping our fingers crossed that we're gonna have, have some money to fill in there with a budget amendment later. We did a lease buyback with enterprise this year on our vehicles. That totaled about $190,000 in revenue. That's why that revenue line is, is a little different last year than previous years. Those funds will go into fund balance. So staff's recommending to appropriate $70,000 of that back into the budget just to pay for some of those lease expenses and to cover other general expenses as, as everything's going up. We've also appropriated the $30,000 that's remaining in state funds that we've received to go toward the South Main Street project. So we got that money this year. We spent $4,800 of it or so. And we don't expect to spend any more this year, but we're re-appropriating it next year because we have to have those funds spent by the end of December. So continue the streetscape project with those as well. I do have included in this budget the addition of a planner or community development position. Sorry, planner, community development or development services. Mr. Saldo reminded me that I think King's Mountain has a development services. So playing around with the wording there, but basically this, this position was shifted from the code enforcement position to handle code enforcement work, but also planning work, development ordinance work, grant writing, and grant management. So something I want to get you all's feedback on because that one position has shifted and changed. And we've talked about evaluating that position, so would like to get some guidance on how to kind of move forward with that.
Is that a full-time position?
Yes, ma'am. We did add a line item for council expenses with a $5,000 budget. Thinking on this was they could be used for promotional items or certain requested items. I know we've talked a couple of times about a camera system for town hall. Mr. Saldo is working on some quotes for that. But just some general expenses that, you know, council may want to put some funds toward. We have that sort of discretionary funding in there. Funds have been included to upgrade the telephone system at, at town hall. It's about a $3,500 increase in that line item. I think the phone system we have is original to the building, and every time I try and call somebody back, it beeps at me in a weird way. And doesn't have a lot of the functionality as far as being able to have visual voicemail or forward to, to some of the public works employees. So we'd have a lot more functionality with a, with the new phone system there.
Is that keeping the existing system, what do you upgrade exactly?
Just the phones themselves.
Just the phones themselves? So the main writing and everything will be the same?
Mm-hmm.
And you consider looking going to voiceover internet program?
Yeah, so it actually would be go-to, a go-to service through those phones, go-to meeting. So it would be via voiceover app, yeah. So there's not, yeah, I guess to your point, there's not really a central board like there is where, for a hardwired phone system. It's all, yeah, it's all internet-based.
Okay.
The, so just something to mention in the, in the police department without diving into that budget. I mentioned the code enforcement position was, was moved from there to, to the planner position. We also moved out the park ranger position that had previously been in the police department budget. We moved that to recreation, felt that was just a better fit where we could track those expenses better and, and have that sort of housed by itself. We have the Safe Streets for All grant that's budgeted as both a revenue and expense, so it's a reimbursable grant. So you'll see both of those line items in there. It's in the streets, non-Powell bill budget. So as we do work on that, we'll get reimbursed for, for those funds, so we've already got that in there. We have budgeted some Powell bill funds for use as needed, but we're recommending to save as much Powell bill funds as we can this year and to not actually do a street repaving project this year. We feel the streets are in good enough condition after the paving that's actually started this week. And with the streetscape project and then with projects like Michonne Avenue and with some other projects, we're gonna get a, get an assessment on culverts around town to kind of repair. We're recommending to kind of leave some funds in the budget in case we need them, but to really try and not use, not use those. We've included a 4% COLA and a 3% merit for employees. That's based on some data that has been shared across the listservs. That's the very last pages, or very last page in your packet. People have all been asking, you know, what's kind of everybody doing? So we've calculated those and, and come up with some numbers based on that. We've also increased expenses to cover dental and vision insurance for employees. I know we've talked about this previously. The cost for that is gonna be a little less than $6,000 to, to cover everybody for those. So we think that's a good recruitment tool to be able to advertise that we're not only covering health insurance, but dental and vision as well. And I don't think we've gotten the formal quote back for the life insurance yet, but based on some of the current employees that are at that maximum cap of $50,000. You'll have to remind me, Rhonda, I'm drawing a blank at what that total number was. It was about...
It was $18 per month for employee.
Yeah.
The increase in what we're paying now with the 50%, or one, one-time salary up to $50,000 was only like...
20%.
20% increase, which it's a small expense anyway. I think we figured $6,000.
Yeah, I think it was six and change.
If we were fully staffed, it'd be $6,048.
So have those additional benefits in there that we wanted to, again, use as a kind of recruitment retention tools. And then the last item in the general fund that, that I wanted to mention was the YMCA subcommittee met with representatives from the Y. And their request was to increase their funding from $48,000, to $48,000 from $40,000. Of course, Mr. Edwards and Mr. Thomas are on that subcommittee, so we can, can get into that, that discussion a little bit later. But general fund, that's kind of the, the big changes or recommendations. And then just real quick in the utility fund, recommending another 2.5% rate increase for water and sewer rates. That is as Ms. Melton described as chicken nuggets, I believe, when she made her presentation a couple of years ago to keep that increase going to maintain our system. We didn't build in an increase for Latimore rates, you know, we didn't do that last year. The goal is to continue to collect numbers and then reevaluate with Latimore in two years or maybe a year and a half at this point. So we don't have that in there. It's a minimal amount that it would go up, so that's, I'd say council's discretion. And you will see a large appropriation from reserve in the utility fund to complete plans and projects. But at the end of last fiscal year, we moved some ARPA funds, I think it was $408,000, into the budget that we didn't spend, that went into fund balance to do these projects like upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant and replacement of sewer lines and some other CIP projects. So we've got a big chunk of money budgeted in there to continue to move those projects forward. That's all I got. Happy to go through certain lines or departments, or however you'd like to proceed, Mr. Mayor.
I guess we can just take it page by page?
Okay. Sure, okay. So first page of the general fund is the revenues. Like I mentioned, most of those, those changes in the bulleted report are highlighted in yellow, so I won't go through those. I do want to mention, though, that interest rates have been very good. And Ms. Allen has taken full advantage of putting some money into investments. And we've gone from $4,000 in investment income last year to almost $30,000 we'll have this year. So she's projecting 45 next year. So it's good, really good thinking on her part. See, that's one change we didn't highlight, but I wanted to mention that. Some of those items in the revenue are, so like library donations, that's money we get from the county. That's a pass-through to the library. And then Cleveland County Recreation Grant is the money for the Ranger and the Greenway that we get from the county. That's a pass-through, so that all kind of moves into the revenue, but then it's just moved out to those various...
The library, what else was a pass-through?
The Cleveland County Recreation Grant, that's for the Greenway.
Questions or comments on this first page?
Well, we put 84 in there recommended for Cleveland County Recreation Grant. So that's just what we're gonna recommend if we can, and they would have to put that in their budget?
What they do is they budget, I don't know how they calculate it, but they pay for the Rangers' salary and benefits. And, and they also pay, I believe it's $1,470-ish dollars a month. I don't remember what that adds up for a year. For, I think it's actually for the Springmore Park for some reason, isn't it?
Oh, really?
Springmore's like Landmore, Morford, and all spring parks.
I think everybody gets, yeah.
Oh, just a general kind of park allotment?
It's been like that since I came to work here, so it's, I think it's been the same dollar amount each year, too. So that's his, that's Lance's salary and benefits, and then a little bit for the park.
Other questions or comments? Was it always return?
Sure, yeah.
Or move on to page two, the general fund?
Yep. So first page of expenses in the general fund is the administration section. Again, we've put council expenses, telephone. We've got $5,000 for downtown enhancement. Just to, just to mention it, you'll see it later, but the expenses for web stock and music on main have been lumped into, I think it's community events and it's in recreation. So we previously had some, some funds in downtown enhancement that were a little bit higher that we'd kind of use for that, but wanted to leave some of that money in there for mural projects or any other kind of smaller things that might pop up.
Some substantial percent changes, percent changes in these line items. Seeing a lot of in the 20s and the 30s. Top there, there's 72% in telephone, which we talked about.
Yeah.
And you have 94% in downtown enhancement, 42% increase in contracted services. Can you kind of walk through some of those?
Sure.
At the top, I guess, more specifically?
Yeah. Well, at the top, we're gonna have all of the costs associated with payroll, 401K, we had those types of contributions. Maintenance of buildings and grounds, we've, we've increased that primarily due to our cleaning service. So we had a, a one-woman cleaning crew that was cleaning town hall for a steal for, I guess, seven years since the building was built. And she recently quit. And so we've, we budgeted, I think it's a total of $12,000 between the general fund and the utility fund, splitting some of those costs up. So that'd be the biggest increase there, and then probably some slight increases with landscaping expenses. And, oh, and we did budget some funds for some repairs to the foyer at town hall. So there's some wallpaper peeling, and then there's some, some minor rust around the door frame outside, so repainting that and re-wallpapering the, or, sorry, removing wallpaper and painting the foyer in there. Then the, yeah, the telephone expense is, is what we talked about. Downtown enhancements was just a, was just a decrease from projected, from the budget. I think we had put some of the streetscape project in there previously. That's why that was so high in the 22, 23 budget. And then we've pulled some funds, I think, from that for the music on main events and those types of things. So wanted to leave some money in there, but yeah, definitely decreased that since we're moving some of that around. And then contracted services, the primary increase there is the streetscape project with McGill, so that's offset by the ARPA revenue appropriation in the revenue section. So wanted to have some of those funds in there because we still have some money remaining on the contract we have with them. And then I expect there to be, you know, more expenses as we keep going along, so.
Are the bids still open for cleaning services?
They closed Friday. We got two. The lowest one was, it was a little more than 12. Tracy was gonna try and negotiate with them a little bit, see if we could get close to that 12. The other one was like $3,500 a month.
I think he thought he was coming every day.
I said he better come every day for that price. Yeah, so she was gonna circle back to both of them, but we felt like we could get close to that, that 12 number in there, but, yeah.
Are they local?
Yeah, they, I think that lowest one was the one that, that cleaned some of Shelby's buildings, City of Shelby's buildings. But they were both local. I can't remember where the other one was from, but, yeah.
Who does our landscaping?
Pete Mott does it here at town hall. That's what that expense is for.
Is that put out for being on a periodic basis?
It is, I think it's every three years. We have a three-year contract that's probably up this coming year, so, yeah.
I know they've gone up other places. Pretty good. I mean, I see.
They have, so is that something that we could look at?
We would, we'd look at it if it's, I think it expires this coming year, so we would look at it when it gets close to expiration. Yes, ma'am. Have to bid that out. And we've, Mike and I have had conversations about public works crew handling that, so that's another option that we would look at, but... I just volunteer you for that, Mike, is that what I just did? If you, yeah, let me, yeah, let me add that. Once you have a full staff, that would be something that we would consider, certainly.
Other questions or comments on this page? Now, can we move on to the police department?
Okay. Not, not much to mention here. We, we did need to change the two license plate reader cameras to four, as council previously voted on that. We just didn't update that, that box there. And we were gonna increase supplies and materials a little bit more than is currently listed just due to the increase in uniforms and other expenses.
So I suppose to read full?
Yes, sir, yeah. Oh, and we do have some, some funds budgeted for range improvements. So they use the area down at Clearwater for qualifying and practice. And so the range improvements would add a small metal building for some storage and would build the barn back up where they put the targets in front of and do some other landscaping, some minor landscaping. And one thing I did want to note is the non-capital equipment purchases has two firearms and then four ballistic vests. There's a program through the Department of Justice where you can get reimbursed for those ballistic vests. I haven't actually seen the notice of funding for this year, but we want to put that money in there so that we can get those vests for those officers. But we will go after that, that money. It's a pretty easy grant to fill out. It's just getting the money from them to actually come back to us, so hopefully could offset that expense.
Are we fully staffed in the police department?
Well, we have one police officer that is out on medical leave that we expect to come back sometime in May. Yeah, he'll come back in May to kind of get retrained back up and then start full-time in June. And then we, we did shift the, the code enforcement position over to the planning position, so that position's no longer there. But in terms of positions that we have that are open, I think Austin's the only one, right? We got two?
Only one.
Okay. Yeah, so just the, just the one.
Okay, and you're hiring somebody that's gonna lead the code and some other stuff?
Yeah, so what we've done in this budget was taken those funds and put them towards the, the planning position, which would cover code enforcement. It would basically be the position that Grayson's filling right now. But again, that would eliminate that police department position, so that's something I wanted some guidance on. Do we want to shift those funds? Do we want to leave those funds in that position, or how do we want to handle that? We have some, some other options for contracting out code enforcement. Foothills Regional Commission could, could do that. We could leave that in-house and then leave it in that police department position or shift it to the planner position. And, you know, those are, those are basically our options.
So what are the two firearms?
That's just for...
The two hand guns for reserve or part-time officers?
And I think the, the bigger conversation that we've talked a little bit about is, you know, the, the level of service that the, the police department, you know, provides and should continue to provide, and what does that look like in terms of staffing levels? You know, currently, we've got, just for reference... You know, currently, we've got, just for reference, on day shift, we have one patrol officer, and when we're fully staffed on night shift, we have two patrol officers. Of course, during the day, we have the chief lieutenant and the investigator. But I think we need to start thinking about what that looks like going forward because if we want to do more proactive policing during the day, we really only have one officer to do it. We do have an NSRO, but that, you know, he's dedicated to the school, so.
But we do have two officers at nine?
Yes, ma'am. When we're fully staffed, yes. We're one short on one of the night shifts right now.
Are we hired now, or is we're likely to retire?
That's, yeah, that's the one that's out on medical leave that we, he should be coming back next, this, later in May.
So basically, a third of our police force during the daytime is just administrative officers?
Yes, sir.
We've got three that are administered, and then we have one on the toll, and then one of us on the, so we have five of the nine. If budget was no constraint, what would be the ideal?
Just carry this.
Two on each day shift, two on each night shift, or the night shift supervisor that would work split shift between the two.
So what, how many more hires would that be?
Three, one, two, three.
Three more?
I also have to think, though, for succession planning for the future, you've got an active that's close to retirement, and a lieutenant that's close to retirement, and people, you know, if it's a special detective position, put someone in that can work towards being in that position where that person leaves. And plus, you know, the detective now is on call twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. You know, that's, that's it. That's a lot on one person.
It is, and I'm not going to have to speak up because I don't, you know, it'd be a conflict of interest, but that is a lot. And I think Jessica helped share those, so I was kind of hoping somebody would be put back into that place to help share the on-call.
And that's...
What's the typical on-call, what's the number for calling, that they're calling out per week, per year, per month, or...
Well, he's not called out a whole lot, but it's just that he is on-call, pew, four hours, I mean.
Yeah, I'm...
Doesn't allow you to get out.
Again, what's the cost per year? Do we have that information?
I don't have that offhand, but that's something we can, we can get. And that, to me, would be...
We have had a huge increase in calls for service for the law enforcement house. In an ideal world, we'd love to have as much possible, but, you know, a lot of what we look at is usually the need spaces, right? So it's hard to sit here and understand really what it is that we need without having the numbers or information that we can look at to decide. That is from my perspective.
Sure, yeah.
So, I mean, yeah. So let's do this, too, just rough order of magnitude. Nine on the staff, salary and wages is five hundred percent, if I call it six hundred. Adding three would be twenty percent increase, so two hundred grand more on top of that. Well, there's two hundred grand more on total expenses of one point six, twenty percent.
You think if I could, you know, outfit an officer vehicle?
Right, some of the residual stuff, right, upfront sunk costs.
Insurance, retirement, 401K, payroll tax.
Right, but I guess I was just using the top one as a general, rough order of magnitude to give us an idea of what kind of percentage increase that would be. But I'm with you, too, Marty, is like, can we justify the need? Yes, succession is important, and there's a lot of relationship building in succession planning as well, too, with the community, right? Where's that balance point, though?
Right, at some point, it's going to have to change.
Right, and we don't live forever.
You can't skip on public safety, you know, maybe as the town grows.
I think it's something that we can definitely investigate further this year. I don't know that necessarily affects this year's budget. But to Nathan's point, succession planning probably needs to be happening now.
Yeah.
But myself, I'm lieutenant and sergeant, will retire basically at the same time, so I'd like to see things continue rolling.
How many years is that?
Twenty-four years.
Five years?
Yeah.
That's not much time.
I don't know if the detective will, it probably won't be that long for him to retire.
So even shorter. My point being, like, yeah, we need to probably make this a priority for this year on discussion and data collecting and building a justification to get it in next year's budget.
It may taste like RMS system.
So it's all right. Same particular reviews for the last twenty-five years, twenty-six years?
So the four ballistic vests, is that to replace expired vests, or is that...
Thanks to replacements, to yours, to your hires. And then the BVP by that was a grant pays fifty percent of that cost. It'll pay us back a percent thirty. It's just very difficult to get, I mean, it's not difficult to get the money, it's difficult to get the CD.
It's difficult for us to get it, for some reason.
Well, and if we're looking at a succession planning to move forward in the future, I hope that we have some data-driven numbers, too, to see where we are as our crime rates, some calls for service, and this, I think, so we can make a better determination.
I'm sure this crime rate has increased in the last fifteen years. Close as ever been, call lines less than twelve or calls per year.
Three a day, four a day.
Less than, probably anywhere between ninety to a hundred and ten accidents per year. None of those spear-like, so it means...
I think the theme that I'm hearing is to do some succession planning, have it definitely based on numbers, but make sure that we're also making sure that we're not going to hit a point where everybody, you know, retires and goes home and kind of find that balance of how many people do we, do we need as we, as we build the department up to not only replace people, but then get to a level as we're, as we're growing, so.
I think there's definitely the option of a phased succession planning.
Yeah.
And then also, too, I'd like to know how much overlap is ideal for that.
Yeah.
Six months, a year, two years?
Sure.
You know, how long do we need to carry potentially a little heavier, you know, employment budget?
Yeah, exactly.
And then we eventually taper back down as folks retire, right, so.
Anything else? For now?
Nathan, is there anything else we need to address?
I think it's pretty much over here. Now, we can move to general fund, streets, pow bill or non-pow?
Yes, sir. So the big change in the non-pow bill section is the Safe Streets for All Grant. Again, that's offset by revenue in the first section. And then in the pow bill section, we've not budgeted as much for contracted services, which is normally where the street pavement project would come out, but we did leave a hundred and seven thousand in there for various repairs or different things. We did, did increase, I think it was the repair section of the maintenance and repair to streets. I'm just budgeting a little bit more to, no, I'm sorry, that was, I think we budgeted a little less last year. We were going to be over, so we're bringing it back up to the, to the actual, actual number there. Cover street sweeping and just general repairs to the streets, you know, pothole patch and things like that.
And what is kind of peculiar, the twenty-one, twenty-two actual is twenty-six hundred dollars, and the projected for this fiscal year wrapping up is at ten. Coming from that history, I recognize that it's a, you don't know what's wrong until the pothole exists, but it's an interesting trend. I'm wondering if there's any value in, what's the risk of knocking it down back to ten, or twelve, or fifteen? I don't know that it carries a whole lot of weight in the overall expense column, though, so.
Yeah, we contract that street sweeping out. Is that, is that something we have somewhere else? Is that why that's changed, or...
It's always been there.
Okay.
Has that gone up, that street sweeping?
No, for the last...
Since we had him, I think.
Yes, since we started five, two years ago.
Any indication that it might?
No, we met with him six months ago or something, I think, and I think he was, he was happy, and we've been happy, so. Did we used to have street sweeping in contracted services? Because that, yeah, I'm curious about that twenty-one, twenty-two actual now, too, why that was twenty-seven hundred dollars, but... I'll look at that, though, that's a, that's a good question.
Because I can see the repairs in miscellaneous being at ten or eleven.
Yeah.
And then the street sweeping, even if you put that back in the hundred and seven for contracted services, you're still substantially loading past year's actuals and loads.
Yeah.
Any other questions on streets? Okay, for new moms, a solid waste?
Okay. One of the things to really mention here are we added some funds for adding more gravel down at Clearwater. We've got the republic charges that are offset by the user fees, increase for the landfill expenses, and some small equipment purchases of TARP system for the F-550 and some gas backpack blowers. Lease payments increased due to the enterprise vehicles.
So what do you mean by TARP? Five fifty, F-550?
It's a TARP system to go over the back of the F-550, so it's got those little arms and it can bring some tarp back in the bed.
I got you.
Some gas blowers are probably fourteen hundred bucks in solace. I have a little, three or four hundred each, so. Drop in a bucket for the service that's provided, so.
Yeah, and that salaries and wages is budgeted for full department. We're down two in there right now. Mike's got some interviews, but we've got two positions to fill. Both are solid, or general maintenance worker positions, right?
Yeah.
So two totals, as I asked Mike, how many are we down in your department?
Three.
Three total?
Yeah, the other maintenance worker position, that's the wasteland. Hopefully, by July first, we've got somewhere to put those backpack blowers on.
Okay, move to recreation?
Okay. I've mentioned most of this, but again, you'll see an increase in salaries and wages because we've moved the full park ranger position into here. It did previously have, I think, a portion of the general maintenance worker. We had some funds for Jerry that actually came out of here, so we've moved the full position for Lance into this budget, though. I've increased things for fertilizer, seat and pest control down at the park. We did budget some money for the memorial that we're working on for Mr. Hensley at the park. I feel pretty confident we'll have some donations and community support for that, but wanted to make sure that we were able to maintain it or make the level that we, that we wanted it at, so have those funds in there. The highlighted forty-eight is the YMCA, and then I put community events in the miscellaneous. That's where web stock used to be. It was twelve thousand five hundred for web stock, and so bumped that up to fifteen for music on main. Miss Holland's been great at getting sponsorships for, for those music on main events. But I left community events open because I know we had some discussion at the retreat about what web stock looks like next year with the amphitheater, and then do we want to do our own event? So how do, how do those funds kind of shift around? So still got the money in there, and we have some more flexibility on what we do with them. Last item, we have a mower budgeted and then doing some repairs to the picnic shelter down at the park. We currently have like a dropped ceiling that was insulated when it was built, don't know why. The outdoor ceiling, but it has some lights up there, a lot of the lights aren't working, and so our thought is to tear the ceiling down, tear the lights down, take the insulation down, and really just leave it open, probably add two big security lights on each end. And, yeah, make them dawn to dusk and just clean that, clean that up, make it a little bit nicer. Most of the time, it doesn't get used after dark anyway, so having all those lights and everything, I don't think makes sense, just some security lighting.
I'll mention here, Councilman Green did pass along that he was adamantly opposed to increasing the Y-line budget. So I'm just speaking for him. He emailed the council, but just in case you didn't get a chance to see it, he desires to leave, at most, leave it at the forty thousand, which is...
Yeah, now, Mr. Edwards, and I can speak to that number, or at least I'd be glad to. I can't speak for you, so. The history of that, the funding for the Y is seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars is what we put in as an investment to the YMCA. Not a small number, but it's over a sixteen-year time period, so if you do the math on that, it's about forty-eight thousand, three hundred something a year if you average something in. There was some good discussion about putting actual numbers to it, and there's, I think, Mr. Edwards would agree that they can't really give us hard numbers. Mr. Longton would say that probably as well. And we asked them several times to just tell us what you need, and so basically after, I said, well, generally, we have provided about forty-eight thousand dollars per year, that's the number you fix it. I said, well, it sounds like we could do forty-eight thousand. So that's how that number got put on out there. And jump in here anytime.
Yeah. I was, I was just going to say, we did advise that they bring a lot more detail of how that forty-eight would be, albeit arbitrarily used, you know, but gave examples of like, okay, if, you know, if you had to charge full price to all the sports kids across all the sports, and if you had to charge for the pool days, for the community pool days, what would that be in those cases? And then what's the delta? So also, you know, what other programs are they providing that, if they were not not-for-profit with sponsorships, what would that, what would an open market rate be for those? And then just share that information about like how, how you came up with, how you're going to use that forty-eight grand instead of pool days and sports. That's not enough information for us, so. Again, it's arbitrary, it's dispersed across the whole Y, but I think if they could share the potential impact of light services elsewhere and the cost to the community and the benefit the community is getting, I would entertain it myself as, as the forty-eight. And if they go above and beyond that, I'd entertain more, too, to be honest. But they really have to go, they really have to get into nitty-gritty and share a lot more information on how they're going to use that if they go for more.
Yeah, initially, I was very discouraged because they started out with the path of, why was our funding reduced? And I hope we've moved so far past that. It's not about why. Tried to explain to them, we had service expansions, we had different things that were... that we're looking at, including this planner position. And so, I'm okay with remaining at the 40,000, I don't think they would walk away from 40,000. They want to continue the partnership, but they want to get back to a, around that 50,000 dollar a year. But I still, I'm not convinced that they can, um, show us the actual numbers of how our money is activated in the community. And, uh, you know, the Y is so much more than just money as well, but again, we have unlimited, we don't have unlimited resources to just pour into special interests. We could say, "Well, let's put it in the greenway, let's put it into charging stations."
There's opportunity costs elsewhere.
Put it wherever we want to, so, um, they're, they're still wanting a multi-year type plan so they can do some strategic long-term planning. And I just don't know that we're in that position, and I know Mr. Green's position very well, and I appreciate you sharing that. But again, I don't know, is it 40,000 or somewhere above than that? You know, we, we still have very, a very small number, like 83 units or something.
Yeah.
That's receiving the town discount 10%. So what is 83 units? Is that 240 people? Is that 83 people? Is that? And then there's other, um, people that get a greater benefit because they work for Cleveland County Schools or whatever it is, that's, that might be a town investment that gets, gets a greater benefit, so. But I'm looking for discussion on that as well, I think we have time to still consider, do we keep the funding at 40,000 and leave contracted police like it is and ask for more metrics to be able to show what it is that they're putting the money toward? Do we pack, do we shoot for less? And that was the general discussion, meaning so 48,000 was just a rough number that the Y threw back to us as what they were hoping for, based on what I said about.
How much over the years?
Average over the 16. Cause I do want them to see that we have had a huge investment in the YMCA and, I love, I like the Y, but also like a lot of other things that we could put in the numbers. 775,000 dollars and the police department would go, 775,000 dollars in the street sewer city. And even 50,000 or 48,000 a year is a, is a pretty significant number to throw out tips. Anyway, that's enough ranting.
I was thinking at one time we, the, the number was 70,000.
It was getting close.
Was it not?
Yeah, it started out on a trajectory like that, got up to about 65,000.
Yeah.
It, it dropped off sharply because of some dissatisfaction, some problems and issues.
But it's been at 40,000 probably the last four to six years.
Yeah, it's just, it went from 58 down to 40 and that's where they had this major issue with why did they get funding cut so short? And I tried to explain to them, e- even in today's, Mark, we, you know, are we in a recession or we not? I mean, we, we have to look out for the town's best interest and.
I think some of the frustration is in the fact that that request that you were talking about has been on the table for the last several years.
Wow, yeah.
And that, that, that data just doesn't ever get presented the way that we're looking for.
And we, we expressed that. I flat out told them, I said, "If you guys can present this in the way I'm asking, you have a, unless something dramatically changes, you're a variable vote for me, but if you can't present it the way I'm asking."
A lot of unreasonable.
No, it's not. We went down to the point of like, if you guys were a for-profit normal business and you were reporting to your stakeholders or needing to go into the bank for a loan, you need to spell out how many widgets you're gonna make for whatever, how much.
Exactly.
All right? So like, state your case, show us the math.
Yeah, and in their defense, you know, and what I've been told all my life is recreation does not make them middlemen. And so, I don't know if it's Tom Green or one of councilmen's and councilmembers in the past that, you know, maybe we should get out of the recreation business. And that is for consideration, do we want to continue with the contract and, um, not provide the contract services and, uh, go on, or do we go all in and it's multi, I mean, we can't afford a.
We can't create a recreation facility ourselves.
And they have a $7 million facility there and they have a commitment into our community, so I think the partnership is there. I just don't know what level of funding is appropriate based on the numbers that they provide. Cause if, if we're gonna hold like the police chief's feet to the fire, like, well, show us the numbers. I mean, we don't want to do that because public safety is, is hugely vastly more important to me than.
$10 savings on a baseball.
So I just want to make sure we apply the same standards. If we're asking for numbers and data, we ought to get numbers and data and if we don't get it, then we should back off and reconsider.
I agree.
I agree.
Well, my, my only other concern is, I mean, if we're gonna keep the fund, we give almost every other line item a percent increase every year. We haven't given them one in three, four, or five years.
I think it's, I think we've been in this thing at 40,000 for three years.
At least.
That's what the town is.
What, have they ever give you data on what the numbers, of the numbers?
We get, we get word, if you, if you read that report, you can tell where the money goes by category.
By category, yeah.
And that's about it. I can't quote the categories, but.
But you don't understand.
I, I've tracked it several years.
But you don't really understand how that has impacted individuals using that category?
Your eyes will be correct.
Right. Which is, which is the, I think, the heartening part over the last couple of discussions is like, how is the individual using your services benefiting this? How, how is the city saying, "Hey, neighbor Joe, you get a $50 discount a month because of the city paying for it?" And it's applied to everybody, all right? We can't identify that in their current budget projections.
But to your point, Pat, yeah, they want to do 48 plus.
CPI increase?
CPI.
Every year?
In a multi-year contract, so that they do get some kind of increase over time.
They, they said they would bring that information and present their case for that as well.
Yeah.
So if they do that and they can show the justification, I mean, like, there's no doubt that they, there's a, I don't want to say cheaper opportunity here for us to pay them than have a recreational department and employ ourselves, right? But that's what it comes down to. We couldn't afford to have a recreation department, let alone employ to support it at this price.
Are they coming to the May?
They were, I thought they were planning on coming to the May 2nd maybe.
I think so, yeah. If we were giving them a 2 and 1/2 percent increase a year, we'd probably be right around 40,000. So I mean, I'm gonna say, if you're gonna do it, if you don't give them any increase.
Well, then I guess that's the other thing too, is we were looking at year by year, um, would the council want to do a multi-year with that CIP type increase or is that something we're just gonna continue working on and negotiate? Because I could see how very difficult that would be for them to not know year to year whether they're gonna get continued funding from the town. We have multi-year contract regarding Web for the facility, the gymnasium, phenomenal. But, um, what's your opinion on that? I mean, I don't know what your thoughts are on.
Well, I think we got the parks master plan underway.
And that was one big thing we talked about, is that we don't know how our parks master plan's going to fit into this. Maybe we are all in for parks and, you know, positions and hiring people and funding our own situation, but maybe we're not, so I don't know.
And we can talk about that towards the end and I think we kind of left it as, we would bring back to you all 48 with a CPI increase, but it was still a one-year contract, just to kind of wait and see what that master plan was. Cause then if, if we did want to go forward and sort of set us up on what they were asking for and we could continue it or, or go the other direction.
So at one time it was thrown out there to give them like $8,000, $6,000, I mean, it was something minimal.
Yeah, that was based on the number of units and that town discount, so it's like 7,500 dollars is basically what those 83 units are experiencing in discounts.
Right.
And so again, do we have 83 people or 250 people out of 5,000 that are benefiting from 40 or 48,000 a month? And that's where we just don't know because they can't get us a number and tell us how many people. And, and my statement is now and has always been, we're subsidizing recreation for greater western Cleveland County. And, uh, if that's what the town board wishes, then certainly I'm standing with it, but I think, um, we need to be responsible for the money and taxation here in towns.
I, I proposed the idea to the YMCA board too, to start leveraging their conditions at surrounding boards of government and saying, "Hey, Bulling Springs is or is not supporting five, 40 grand, 48 grand, whatever it is, can you pitch in five grand from each location to make it a little easier decision?" And it's still only 48 grand, but then Bulling Springs portion is 25 or 20 or whatever. So, cause we can, we, to Mark's point, we can demonstrate that it's a western part of the county, not just our little one-mile radius town.
I think that, that discussed this couple of before and I think the actual county didn't give them anything, is that correct?
Yeah, and they've not reached out to the other.
But to like Latimore, you go to, you know, go to those little boards and say, "Hey, give us a couple grand." Or give it to Bulling Springs to pass it to us.
Latimore, Moore's burn, I don't.
Well, you know my point though, right?
Well, I understand what you're saying, I don't disagree with you.
I was just telling you, guys, I hear about this grant, you know, the $1,400 a month or whatever, a year, whatever it is that we do to spring more apart. I mean, we, we have some weird things always going on, but, um, I hope that we do consider that the Y is a part of our community, they have a substantial investment, but we also have other things that we need to pay for and, um, and I'm lucky, Pat, you know, if we're looking at increases in each line item at a certain percentage, maybe we should do that with this contract as well.
Well, they've made better strides as far as being here and reporting and following the contract. That was one of my issues several years ago, but they've corrected the vast majority of that.
And that's why they want to return back to that close to 58,000 dollars a year. Tried to explain that we had other service expansions, things, planner, the economy, we, we had a lot of other things coming into that.
Well, I'll add an interesting point that came up, just kind of to your original point, Mr. Edwards, that they have, they know that people are coming into town to go to a ballgame, even if they're not a Bulling Springs resident, and when they leave the ballgame, they go to Italian Garden or they go to McDonald's. And so, if they have any way of justifying just a portion of that, to be able to come to the meeting and say, "Oh, we had, you know, 500 people, if 20% of them are town residents, the rest of them came from out of town and spent money, you know, in your town," that at least gives us something to kind of tie those numbers to.
And either way, right now would be 10, 11 baseball, they play Forest City every other week here.
Yeah.
It's on Forest City, 15 minutes away, but still, it's not Bulling Springs.
Well, people do travel here to come to the YMCA. I mean, and they're, they're gonna stop and buy gas and they're gonna stop and eat and do some of those things and that's what we want to be an economic driver. And so, I think the money, like I said, 40,000, 48,000, I mean, $8,000, I'm not sure it's worth the fight or the argument that's in.
Well, they do maintain the ball, because I mean, that's part of the agreement, they maintain the fields.
Just under. I mean, that's my theater, but.
Yeah, it's not Caleb Edwards' standard.
I'll take it, I'm happy with it.
But it's in there. How much, how much do we have to do maintaining the pole?
We pay the utilities.
We cut the grass.
We go the grass.
Cut the litter.
I mean, that's, that's a lot of work.
That's most of it.
Inside the bins, they.
They drag the dirt and pull the weeds before the season starts.
So we have manpower, we have equipment, we have depreciation, all those things we have.
I will say that, I was just talking to Jordan, the sports director last night during Jackson's back practice. They are, like I said, they're planning on replacing that window and the press box and they're buying new equipment for the heroes and extra umpire gear and stuff like that, so. We may have to buy new dirt and stuff for pitching down a couple times a season and washes away, so, I mean, they are doing some.
Doing very well.
It's bare minimum.
Yeah. But again, this master plan might change all that, that this park, the whole park system back here looks totally different.
Yeah.
We'll learn better when that's finalized, I think, in our direction. But going with the, the single year, um, contract with them, I think was what we were trying to look at. And that's how we arrived at 48,000.
So single year seems pretty firm and I guess what we need is a bit of consensus on whether 48 for that single year or 40. I mean, this is just to be presented, voted on later in June or in June.
For me, it's all going to come down to the quality of the metrics they report, how they're presenting.
So is that better to keep it at 40 in the, in the budget that's presented and then with the option that, I don't know which way is better, to do that, that'd be the better way, start lower? And then if they can make their case at the meeting?
We don't have much to hold them to the new reporting standard if we've already given them the money.
Yeah.
But it is a, what is it, a quarterly invoice that we get from them?
That's what we're contracting.
Quarterly, yeah. So, you know, we could give them more upfront and then threaten to withhold the second payment or third quarter or something like that.
So we thought they'd give them the 40?
No, no, no.
No, ma'am, no, that, this would be next year.
Okay, okay.
So they want, their first invoice will come in at 12 grand in September instead of 10, yeah.
Okay, okay.
If we choose to make it 48. I think to make our biggest point though is, in the budget, do we keep it at 48 and go down if we need to, or do we put it at 40 and have to ask for additional appropriations? If we accept it before the budget is written or after the budget is confirmed?
We can still make adjustments after the May meeting until, until we pass the final budget before July 1st.
Before July 1st, okay.
Yeah, we, we still have time to make changes.
So we, okay, if they come up May 2nd and we say, "Hey, that's not good enough, come back to the June, you want to give us more information?" And we still have time to address the budget before.
In theory, we could have the June meeting still not be settled and then have a special meeting at the end of June.
Yeah.
And then pass the budget. That is, we've done that many years. If necessary, that's not, but we still have a couple of more opportunities, so.
And I would say, consider somewhat of a contingency, so we could put 48 in the budget and for the first two quarters, still pay them 10. And if we're not satisfied by the third quarter, keep it at 10 or give them, you know, another four and then another four.
Well, we've made those requests for the last several years, those specific type of requests, and we hadn't seen any, but, I mean, oh, then, I can tell you what categories that, that money goes in. I, I don't see it changing, but.
Can you, that's very possible.
Were you, were you guys specific to them?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I figured you were, you know, not just categories, but what?
I gave them examples, I said, "Give me a head count, how many kids are in your sports? Give me a head count of how many use the pool days, give me a head count of how many senior events you put on?" And then give me the market rate and what you guys charge for those and what's the difference times head count?
Okay.
I mean, to me, that seems like it'd be an easy, five grand here, seven grand here, twelve grand there.
Let's see.
Done.
Yeah.
But right, right now it's just going into use sports or programming or recreation services, whatever the line of events and then it's dispersed out.
You have to also realize too, that because they're a 501(c)(3), they have the ability to write off sponsorships that are at no cost in real money, but are expensed on paper because of man-hours, right? Impacting, so, "Hey, we're gonna let this family do free swim lessons." Well, that's 100 man-hours at $20 an hour, that's $2,000 sponsorship. On paper, on paper.
Tell us how many scholarships and then, you know, add dollar, dollar figures to that and that. Tell us how many scholarships and then, you know, add dollar figures to that and that might get up.
Even though there's no donation or real money exchanged.
I still, everybody can say you're asking somebody to supply a service, but you're giving them the same amount every year in the past five, six years. I mean, who would you do that to?
Well, we do that to a lot of contract services and we have a contractor every time period and we bid it out again. So I guess this is sort of our bidding process, if you think about it in terms of contracts. But I'm okay with giving them an increase based on what, but it's sort of hard to know what that number is.
Well, I can touch base with them this week, make sure they're prepared to come to the May meeting and then, again, we'll talk about this. So perhaps a chance to change it if that's not satisfactory.
I told Jordan last night, I said, the board's coming to the May meeting, so hopefully he can kind of put some bug in there. This is, hey, get there.
All right, utility fund?
Yes, sir. The first section is water sewer revenues. You notice the big number there in reserve appropriation, that's for those projects, putting those ARPA funds back in there that went into reserve. Do have the two and a half percent rate increase built in for water and wastewater charges. And there's not much of a change to the, to the water sewer funds, so. Yeah, not much revenue wise to mention on the next page. If you don't mind, sir, we'll keep rolling, please. Highlighted, I've got the capital outline, capital outlay for lines, that would be a CIP project. We could use those funds toward, got some funds in there to repair the fence around the water tank. At least say we get some new cones, we're getting some cones. And of course, we've got water meters and so just normal, normal equipment and general repairs there. In sewer operations, the first highlighted cell is, are those wastewater treatment plant upgrades that I mentioned? We've talked about those previously. That would, get some plans for them and then get those projects moving forward with actual construction and upgrades. Got some funds budgeted that's included as part of our CIP to replace a thousand feet of sewer line every year. It's just a goal we have to keep the system up and running well. Last few pages are the draft of the strategic plan. I'll have that for you next week on the agenda for your consideration, but just wanted to include it for you. Oh, I will say, speaking of bidding and projects, we have a multi-year maintenance agreement with Viola, I think is what they're called now. They maintain our water tank for us. The last year of that maintenance agreement is pretty much cut in half. So in the Water Operations Department, water tank is thirteen thousand, where that's previously been, I guess.
Thirty.
About thirty, yeah. So decrease there, but that's something we'll have to look back at and rebid and revisit. Because for a while, they've provided good maintenance. But just wanted to mention that since we were talking about bidding projects and that kind of thing.
Why did it go down so much?
The last year of it is just cheaper. I'm not sure if that's because they spend more cost upfront or, but yeah, the.
Probably when they did all that magnet painting and put that new van on.
It's scheduled for interior painting this year. So waiting to get that done.
In general? Where's the other thirty-five percent of the cleaning fee? The sixty-five percent in the administration, where's the other thirty-five percent of the cleaning fee?
It'll be on page, well, the first page of the utility fund. It will be in maintenance, two buildings, grounds, cleaning, there's forty-two hundred in there.
Okay, fine. Well, I think you worded for.
Other comments?
I'm not particularly in favor of raising the tax. And I also think the COLA and Merit's a little stronger, considering we just adjusted sales according to the MAP study.
On the MAP study, was the projection to next year's, next fiscal year? Or was it to catch up to the current fiscal year?
It was to catch up.
What's the competitive, what's the market rate for white towns and physicians on COLA and Merit? To be, to keep up with current fiscal year or to go to the next fiscal year, I guess you'd say.
Page in the very back page of your packet that has some information on that.
Yeah, it's been, it's been all over the board, so we've tried to collect as many responses as we could to have a comparison. You know, we implemented the MAP study and lost at least one police officer a couple of months later, so. Two?
Yeah, two.
So it's, you know, I don't, we're really taking a shot in the dark with COLA and Merit. We want to try and be competitive, but there's always going to be somebody that's offering more, so what's the, you know, what's the balance in there?
And if you look at the median and average, it would still be the low COLA and at or the low Merit.
I'll, I'll say just in general, it's been, been a struggle this year with trying to recruit and retain and trying to keep up with costs that have been going up. Just, yeah, every little part and piece in water sewer and tires for the sanitation truck. And then, of course, like I mentioned, losing, losing people. We had somebody come and work for us for two months and then left to go make seven dollars more an hour, I think it was. I think one of them actually asked if they'd come back, we said, we don't know about that. But anyway, no, it's, you know, people are just, they're changing jobs and trying to get as much money as they can. So we're, we're lucky when we find people that, you know, want to be here and recognize the other benefits that we offer that come along with working here. But we gotta, you know, gotta have people to do all different levels of work too, so.
You want good people.
Yeah.
It's a challenge. Oh, gosh.
I think both ends of the spectrum, you have young guys coming in, young ladies workout guys coming in that have families. I can tell you feeding three little boys is expensive. And then likewise, you know, people that are looking closer to retirement, I want to make sure they're buffering their retirement well, so. I personally, you know, especially seeing the averages and the mediums, I don't go right on track, to be honest. On the tax discussion, Pat, I am curious what drove that point zero zero one, triple zero one increase? Think I remember seeing you send out some revenue neutral tax numbers.
Six, three five.
Three five.
Yeah, that was, that was last year's budget, I think.
I think it was, yeah, I think they did the revenue neutral, I think we did it two or three years ago. And everything, you know how cost of it increases two or three years.
So I guess what's the projection if we do this now or we, how long are we walking in for? I mean, we're historically very conservative in town. Some could argue we've got hands slapped a little bit last year for being too much in the coffers, right? So it's a bad year for, you know. Point zero zero one? You saying something? Sorry.
The county will be doing another rebound next year, so it'll.
Four pocket taxes. There'll be an effect for twenty-five?
Twenty, yeah.
It's a, it's not one thing, it's a combination of all those costs that are increasing. I mean, it's a combination of having to build in those higher COLAs and merits to pay for our people. So it's, it's just costs going up and it's the, you know, the code enforcement, police officer position was a little less than the planner position, so there's some extra funding into that. But it's just, it just all was adding up. And so we could probably cut that position down to a, you know, contracted position from Foothills and cut a bunch of other things in the budget. But it's gonna, I think it's gonna impact our, our people that we've got working here and the level of service that we provide and.
One penny only generates about thirty-three thousand dollars of tax revenue.
So what's the projected salary for the planner position?
I think I've got about sixty in there. I'd project the hiring range is fifty-five to, probably fifty-five to sixty and then with, you know, benefits and everything, it'd be a little bit more.
But the primary focus will be codes and grant writing because we have been very successful with grant writing.
Continue the work of Mr. Sontag as, as built up over the last year in that position.
Well, we have been a conservative community for sure, basically, for my entire life. But the direction that this council has taken over the past several years is business recruitment and thinking about ideas to build new buildings in front of town hall and community engagement strategies. And that requires public safety, that requires infrastructure. We're talking about a huge street scape plan and power lines and turning signals and parks plans. And it's just an amazing direction that we're headed. But we're gonna have to kick in and pay for it. And so we can, we cannot, we can change direction. But, you know, we went from, we went from thirty-nine down to thirty-seven. We didn't go all the way back to revenue neutral, but we were at thirty-nine cents on the, or whatever, thirty-nine cent, thousand dollars. On the hundred. And we came back down to thirty-seven. So moving it up to thirty-eight would be, it still costs more for people because the county reevaluated the property, but it's reevaluated. To me, that, you know, we've got a lot of really good irons in the fire and we need good people, we need talent and across the board. And if you want to have talent, I, I hear from people that I know that retention is going to be very difficult. Why would you work here when you can go somewhere else? And we can't compete with all of that and we can't compete with all that, but we can do better.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you there. I guess what I'm looking at too is, you know, our trend between budget and actual over the last couple of years of revenue to general fund versus expenses. I'm just not seeing that proportion of a one cent increase. Are we, are we trying to keep up our margins? Are we improving our margins? Are we making smaller? If we can remain conservative with a smaller margin, we're not going backwards. On the flip side, to your point, how aggressive and how fast we want to use these CIP targets.
Well, I like the idea of adding, putting everybody up at fifty thousand on life insurance. Because people that make thirty thousand dollars a year typically, they don't have the money to buy life insurance. And that equalizes people. I mean, in that way, you don't say, well, this person's life worked more than that person's. I like the idea of equalizing that across the board and there isn't expense to that. Adding dental and vision, that, that's a nicety, but I don't know that it's a necessity based on the cost that Justin provided. Dental insurance is a hundred and eighty dollars a full week per year, vision is thirty-five per year. Those figures are pretty cheap compared to what I know other people pay, especially state employees and hospital employees. Those are very good rates. I'm sure some people are putting that in benefits, but I don't think many do.
So for us to add dental and vision coverage for every employee, it's six thousand twenty-four dollars.
For the year. And it's easy for one person to walk in and have a six thousand dollar dental expense, especially if they've not had the coverage before. So, I mean, I think that's a huge, to me, that's a big bringer for us to take care of.
I guess do we need to have another meeting to consider tax rate and some of these things such as COLA and Merit and those things? Are we good with where we are tonight? Is that a fair question?
No, it's a fair question.
What's the state doing in COLA this year at all?
They're looking at seven and a half percent over two years for rank and file employees. Now, teachers are different.
Permanent full-time employees.
That was the House proposal, about starting to see it. I don't know that they've even come through consensus on it yet, or that they've even got to it yet. A lot of their consultants have referred to comedians. They've got the recommended five percent per year or a hundred and ten over two years.
Yeah, I think we'll come out of the House at six and a half and then another three, three point five or three next year or something. My question is always, you know, do we absolutely need the planner position now? Or is that something we can get by with contracting out through another source?
It's an option, contract for year to until we can be fully ready. But I think experimenting with Grayson's position would show the value. We got a lot for our ten thousand dollars out of that. It really, it was a huge win for us. I think Justin would say so.
We have, we've contracted with Foothills for a while. You know, I wanted to make sure I put it in this draft for you. I put it in this draft for you all to review, because the longer Grayson's been here, the more it seems like, it's not because of Grayson, but the more planning and zoning questions we've had. So, I mean, he and I talked to three people today, I think, about different, you know, planning and zoning type questions. So, it just seems like it's gearing up and being more proactive about having somebody continue to kind of be in that spot. I think makes sense.
I'm just not sure we can hire somebody based on that. If we're having a hard time filling for 5,000 or 6,000 people, maybe we do.
Is that a market study target, or is that a...
That's generally what I've seen on the listservs with planner postings and on the League's website.
How do you feel about getting somebody to do those functions?
Um, I don't know. It's, there are plenty of planner positions out there across the state, but, you know, we got lucky with Grayson. So, I feel like, I feel like we've, I feel like we've got a good chance of getting somebody. There's some good talent in the area that we might be able to steal, like everybody's doing.
Yeah, we had somebody interested one time. They didn't have experience. But I guess my question more specifically, finding somebody to do planning and COLA before.
Yeah.
Do they go together that well or not?
They do. They typically go together. Typically, either code enforcement person is either a planner or a police officer. Because they deal with the codes and development ordinances, whereas a police officer does a different codes and things, so.
Is Grayson wrapping up his education soon?
His internship or fellow's program with us will end in June, and then he looks to go to law school sometime next year.
Good for him.
Yeah.
Too bad. And probably, at entry level, probably, he would have been a good fit for that. That probably would have been a attractive side.
I think it'd be better if you keep the person in-house, like we've had with Grayson. And then the person only stays a year or two, and we say that didn't work out, then we go back to the drawing board.
Yeah.
I'm not just, I'm not real crazy about the contract. I don't think they do a bad job. It's just that...
It's not personal.
Yeah.
You need to have a relationship with the people you're working with.
Yeah.
And when you're a contract service, you don't have the same relationship, especially in that area. That could be some tough situations where if a lot of people notice the information they have, they're not going to be happy about it. If you have a local person that was staff.
And if economy ever does turn, which it will from a better at some point, then you're gonna have that much more work.
Yeah, you know, none of it's, none of it's definite, but I've mentioned to you all the, you know, the developments out of town. And then, of course, we hope the town homes will come online, you know, sometime next year. And there was a gentleman today that was looking at some property east of town for a apartment complex or multi, not multi, but several single-family houses. I don't know how many it would be, but I think it's, I think it's there. It's just a matter of, you know, when does that economy turn and it really starts happening, so.
I'm like Mr. Liddon. I don't want to see the tax rate increase, but also see the mayor's point. And I think there's a little bit of work that we can maybe do with some of the contracts and some discussion and maybe have another budget workshop meeting to sort of resolve some of these things. As the pleasure of everyone else. That's sort of where I am tonight.
And then Tommy will be here too.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that either.
And then he'll speak back to...
But I'm very thankful for the department heads and for everyone coming together and trying. I mean, we've had good discussions. Hopefully, nobody walks away from here upset or angry. But sometimes we don't agree, but we always have a good discussion, so.
It is good work, and I know it's a lot of work, so I do appreciate all the time that everybody put into it.
Yeah, I made them all use some new forms this year too, so that was extra work. Do you all want to talk about it again at next week's meeting, or do you want to have a separate meeting?
What's next week's agenda looking like?
Um, it's pretty, it's pretty packed. I don't think we're going to have this, time for this lengthy of discussion, for sure.
Well, we'll have the YMCA there to make some type of presentation, I'm sure, at least an appeal for all funding.
And then we just set up another meeting like this?
Yeah.
Like he said, that would be good, and get that YMCA's feedback. Because they know that they're coming to bring data.
And some of the reservations I have on the COLA and Merit is, you know, I look at those numbers off the listserv and I see large population versus 290 people, and then there's just these huge outliers both ends, and that sort of, for me, sort of skews the numbers a little bit. And I always say, there's no place like, it's hard for us to find another. If you look at Elon Davidson, another small university town like ours, really, those things don't compare because they're not in the same type of tax base. We need an industrial park with some industry to help drive our economy and broaden our tax base. And those things would help us tremendously in COLA increases and taxation and all that stuff. But I'm open for any dates. I think the only date I'm not available is, I think, May 17. In May, if we're gonna have a May date or something. Yeah, Mondays and Tuesdays are usually those for me.
As long as it's after 6:30 for me, or 6:30 at the day.
And we can discuss a date next week, hopefully Tommy.
Any other comments? Now, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Oh, is it fair to say no?
No.
Well, remind that the prayer breakfast is tomorrow morning, Grand Center. 6:45 is when it started lineup.
6:40.
Breakfast.
Pray over my cornflakes.
If we get back to the later June, then July won't be an issue, but we'll negotiate July meeting to the 11th.
I've heard that rumor, but I think it's, I think it's true.